It is time for a board wrap-up show for the Pocahontas City Board of Education meeting for the month of April 2012. Just a couple of months left during the upcoming calendar school year before the summer break hits. Our guest is our superintendent of Pocahontas City Schools, Dr. David Pennington. And I want to talk about the board meeting. The first thing I'd like to address, though, was a big loss for our school district. A gentleman that I've known for 20-plus, 30-plus years, Mike Simpson, who has served our district with you, is leaving. And I know that it's always good when positive things happen in somebody's life. And Mike got the superintendent's job at Guthrie. Big hole, though, now in our administration.
Well, it's a great thing for Mike. When I brought him here four years ago, I brought him here with the intention of preparing him to be a superintendent, whether that would have been here or someplace else. And fortunately for him, the opportunity in Guthrie became available. Something he's tried to do for a couple of years. You know, it's kind of an interesting process when you start looking for that first superintendent's job. You do a lot of interviewing, and then eventually somebody, you have that mix of what interviews they're looking for, and they offer you their job. Sometimes it's not something that you can easily identify who a school district is or is not going to hire. School boards do what they do. And I really thought that last year that there were a couple of jobs I know Mike interviewed for that I really felt like that he was a perfect fit and would be a great, do a very good job for those districts. They went a different direction, and that's kind of a part of the process. It does leave a hole for us. We haven't made a decision yet. And of course, that's always the first question you get when a position like that opens. What are you going to do? Are you going to fill it, or are you not going to fill it? Who are you going to hire if you do fill it? I think that my discussions with the board a year ago were that if Dr. Simpson received a superintendent's job, that we probably would not fill that position. Now, there's a difference between not filling a position and eliminating a position. You know, for the last couple of years, we've been very careful about any position in the district we fill, whether it's a teaching position or an administrative position. We've eliminated teaching positions throughout the district as they've opened. Kind of our philosophy has been that as we deal with reduced budgets, and we do have about $2 million less in state funding in this district than we had in 2008. And I think people forget about that. You know, we have school, we function, the buses continue to run, and the assumption is that, well, we know there's been budget cuts, but we really haven't seen it affect anything. Yes, there may be a few more children in my child's class, but we still have our athletic programs are intact, our fine arts programs are intact. The things that reach out and touch children are pretty much the same, with the exception of increased class sizes and increased loads on administrators at various buildings. We've eliminated an assistant principal job at the high school. We eliminated an assistant principal job at West. We eliminated an assistant principal, an interim position assistant principal job at Lincoln Elementary. We had a full-time assistant principal at East Middle School. Now, it's a half-time assistant principal, half-time other responsibilities. So now, that vacancy has occurred here at the central office. And to be consistent in what we've done in other places in the district, we're going to not fill that job. So what does that mean? It means that we'll reassign the duties Dr. Simpson had to other people in the central Will that, will we operate the same? Will it be as good as it was? You know, I think probably for most citizens and most of the public, you really won't notice that. But I'll just tell you, and I think they would tell you the same thing at the buildings, whether it's been teachers or administrators, that we've not replaced, that we can continue to function, but we don't have, we're maybe not providing the same service that we provided before. It just means that everybody's workload is going to increase. And I think that, again, that that's the right thing to do. Again, you know, I've talked to the board about that. We really haven't sat down and, you know, made a complete, made a firm decision on that. There are some people who, in my discussion with them, I know believe very strongly that we need to replace that position. Because, I mean, you look at what Dr. Simpson was in charge of. He was responsible for child nutrition, transportation, technology, facilities. And those are very big areas. They're not instructional areas, but they do touch the lives of children every day. And they're areas that need supervision. And then the other thing that Dr. Simpson did is he handled all the appeals of suspensions that come from the building level. So he had a lot of responsibilities, just like Dr. Cerber before him had a lot of responsibilities. But we'll, you know, can we do it? Yes. Could we do it for five years? I don't think so. But I think we can get by for a year, maybe two. And hopefully by then, the funding for school districts will have improved. The state will be on solid financial ground. They'll put money back into education, and we can start filling teaching jobs to reduce class load, fill assistant principals' jobs at the various sites to help with the tremendous number of administrative duties that administrators have, whether it be evaluating teachers or dealing with students or doing school planning, curriculum, those kinds of things, and then eventually come back and replace that assistant superintendent's position. You know, what it does do is it creates, in my mind, a very large leadership void in the district in that we've been very fortunate in this district to have always had people who, if the need arose, could have stepped into that superintendent's position. The history of this district has been, for the last several years, when a superintendent's job opens, is to go outside the district. But that's not been necessary. Obviously, anytime a job opens, you look at the strength and weaknesses of the people that you have in your system, and then you decide whether or not you need to bring somebody in from the outside or somebody from the inside. Outside or inside. Dr. Neiman has been telling people throughout the district that she intends to retire in December of 2012. So we really could find ourselves in the very near future without anybody in the central office that's ready to step into that role. Doesn't mean people can't get ready, but it's not, it's not just a matter of anybody can step into the superintendency and do that job. I know that there's a lot of discussion about what exactly does a superintendent do. I know that there may be those who, I mean, everybody has an opinion about what that job should be. You know, some people want the superintendent to be out in the schools more. Some people want the superintendent to be at more public events. Some people want the superintendent to be at the legislature more. So, I mean, it's a multi, it's a job that has a lot of responsibilities, but it's not something that I think that an individual, for a district this size, can step into without a lot of central office assignment. And I also think that it needs to be really at the assistant superintendent or superintendent level for responsibility and those kinds of things. So we're going to have some issues, some decisions to make as we go forward. Obviously, no one wants to have a bloated administrative staff. And administration, central office administration is always an easy target. You know, why, because again, people don't, whether you're assistant superintendent or superintendent, you don't touch the lives of teachers and children as much as people at the building level do. And sometimes we have a tendency to think that because that individual's not touching the lives of kids directly, that we don't need them. Just wait until child nutrition doesn't work the way it's supposed to, the buses aren't running on time or they're not functioning, we don't have our buildings properly maintained, and our technology doesn't work, or we make a mistake with finance or personnel and we either are in court because we've done things improperly when it comes time to terminate somebody, or we make an improper employment decision, or we have, you know, a federal suit or whatever it is filed. That's when people realize that you need administration. You know, if you do your job right, which I think we do here, we almost become ambicuous. You know, we touch a lot of areas, people really don't understand what we do. And I, you know, I happen to think that means that we're doing our job well. So, but it's a big loss. I guess I said all that to say that it's a big loss. Kind of the plan right now is not to fill that position, give the people additional duties, and just go forward and see where we are a year or so from now.
Let's talk about the meeting, and kind of interesting that you explained some of that information because it's kind of goes to my first question. And sometimes it's interesting to ask a question that you already know the answer to, but somebody may not know the answer to. People may have seen the agenda or read it in the newspaper that you were going to discuss the football field and the replacement of our astroturf. I say this because, again, I know the answer, but people may say, with the economy and with the problems that schools have, why are we doing this? And I think this is a good forum for you to kind of explain that process.
Well, you know, you got to really, and Dr. Cerber deserves credit for this. When the decision was made to put the artificial surface in originally, Dr. Cerber began at that time to save money in the building fund to replace the turf, because we knew it wasn't going to last forever. You know, we hoped to get 10 years out of it. We really hoped to get eight, maybe get 10. And, but Dr. Cerber started to put away $50,000 a year to do that. Now, what does that mean? Does that mean it was in a separate account? No. It just means that as we did things out of the building fund, that Dr. Cerber made sure that he accumulated money every year in order to replace that turf. And I will tell you, he and I had some interesting discussions about that because my position was that should be a bond project, that we shouldn't take money out of the building fund to do that with, because it is such a large expense. But, you know, there evidently, you know, when the turf was first put in, there were some discussions and promises made that we would use building fund to replace that. It wasn't anything I participated in, but I honored that, and so Joe went ahead and did that. And Mike, Dr. Simpson, continued that when he became assistant superintendent. What's interesting about our field, and again, public doesn't know this, the company that put our field in almost went bankrupt almost immediately. They put several fields in across this part of the country, and to the best of our knowledge, we're the only one of those fields that has not been replaced. Obviously, when the company goes out of business, you lose your warranty, there's all kinds of problems. But our field, because of some things I think we've done to maintain it, we bring an individual from Texas in every year, and he goes, he goes, kind of does an inspection of our field, makes, fixes things. I don't really know how they do that, but they've got a method that they can replace bad spots and do some things to extend the life of your field. And so, really, our field is in great shape. We've used it nine years. We could probably go 10 or 11 years. As we, and every year, we kind of have a discussion about, especially with the gentleman that comes in to inspect our field, how much longer can we get out of it? In the process of all this, it came to our attention that, again, I'm not really sure it's because of the economy, I'm not sure it's because of new products, but there seemed to, there had been a drop in the price of synthetic surfaces, and it seemed to be a very competitive market right now for synthetic fields. And so we put a proposal together, published that where those proposals were published, and really had, we were really surprised at the interest we got. We actually had, we were actually contacted by a company out of Sweden that told us they had the best artificial surface in the world, and they wanted to bid our project. They hadn't done any work in the United States, and they were looking for someplace for a field to be first. And I guess maybe because we were in the middle of the country, they thought that'd be a good idea. One of the things that, as we've watched other school districts do synthetic fields, and as kind of from our experiences, we knew that it was important to have a company that had a track record. So we required, as a part of our bid process, that a company had, had done, I think, 20 fields in Oklahoma in the last six or seven years. We know that artificial surface wears differently depending upon what part of the country you're in, that climate and the winters and the summers and those kinds of things make a big difference. So we wanted a company that had fields in Oklahoma in communities that had similar climates to what we had. As a result of that, we had really only two companies that met that requirement. And the company that was selected by the board was a company called FieldTurf, which is a famous artificial turf company. They manufacture their own, their own, their own product. That's all they do is synthetic surfaces. And so we're excited about that. Everybody, you know, when I, when I go to fields, and you've been to a lot of stadiums, you look at other people's turf, and you go, and the turfs look different. And the fields that I believe are the best-looking in the state are FieldTurf Turfs. So, you know, we're excited about that. And the best thing about it is we anticipated that this was going to be a $500,000 project, and the bids are, our successful bidder is, I think, $358,000. So we're, we're going to start that process as soon as school's out. We'll take the old surface off. Not really sure what we're going to do with it. My guess is we'll try to, I mean, we may cut it up into strips of, I don't know, 10-yard strips and sell it. It was interesting, Dr. Kincaid, who is our board member in a veterinarian town, when I went to look at his new clinic, he had, they had bought the turf off of the field at Muskogee, and they were using it in their clinic for dog runs and that kind of stuff. So there is use for this turf. I guess if somebody wanted to put it, I mean, there's enough of it, you could get some and replace your, cover your backyard if you wanted to. So anyway, we'll, we'll figure something out to do with that, and maybe people want a little, I don't know, putting green in their backyard or something.
Absolutely. Let me ask you a question, though, and again, I'm trying to, trying to think of something that, again, somebody that may not understand that, you know, this is, a lot of kids get use out of this. Over the last nine years, literally, thousands of kids will say they performed on that turf. Is it the same as recarpeting a building or putting new desks in a school? Is it the same thing?
Oh, you know, in a way it is. I mean, the bottom line is that turf is not going to last forever. And once you make the decision to go to an artificial surface, you're going to have to replace it. Again, our goal is to get 10 years out of that surface, and we're going to do everything we can to, to maintain that for 10 years. Now, again, you know, you weigh the issue of, okay, so how much money were we spending to resaw the football field every year, to water it, those kinds of things? I don't have those numbers in front of me because, I mean, that was when I became superintendent, it was the first question I asked. I said, guys, why did we do this? And, and again, Dr. Cerber and Brett Smith had ran the numbers, and they were convinced that when you look at the cost of seed, fertilizer, turf replacement, the cost of staff to water and maintain and mow and do all those kinds of things, that we were going to save $50,000 a year, at least in cost to do that. So that's why we did it. The other part of this feeling, you know this as well as anybody, by the time we got to about the third or fourth game of the season at Sullen Stadium, that turf was in horrible condition. It was not safe for kids. With the addition of soccer, our stadium took a beating. It wasn't, it was, I don't, I don't know what the, you know, I played on that field when I attended school at Tulsa-Hale, and, you know, what I remember about it, of all the fields we played on, it was the roughest field. It seemed to have the most ruts, it seemed to have the most cleat marks, it seemed to have the least amount of grass of any place we played. And of course, at that time, we were playing in Skelly Stadium, and Skelly had just turfed its field. We played at La Fortune, and Tulsa, you know, La Fortune's not a great facility. So, but that's my memory of the stadium in Pocahontas City. And part of the problem we have, you know, we're in a, for growing grass, anybody with their yards knows, this is a tough place. You know, you go 20 miles north, and they're not growing Bermuda, they're growing fescue. But yet, we're just warm enough that fescue doesn't, it takes a lot of work to grow fescue. But we don't grow Bermuda as well as they do in the rest of the state. And it's hard, you know, it's hard here to get your Bermuda to grow. So this was a tough place to grow grass. We had to spend a lot of money to do it. And then with the addition of soccer and the additional time, that, just that additional amount of play on our field just made it very difficult for us to have a good grass surface. So, you know, turf solves that for us. We can use it basically through football season, soccer season. Our kids work out on it in the summer, so it's a good fit for us. And I will tell you, we've had some discussions as we think about what we do in the future. You know, maybe do we want to turf the practice field over at West Middle School? Do we want to, do we want to put artificial surfaces on our softball stadium and baseball stadium? I don't know that we're going to do that, but we've had those discussions and, you know, trying to figure out what really is the most cost-effective way to do that. The other thing I didn't answer the first time around was, these are building fund dollars, these are not general fund dollars. And you can't, you cannot use building fund money to pay teacher salaries, to pay administrator salaries, those kinds of things. So this is not money, it's not a choice of, should we hire three more teachers or should we put turf on the field? They're completely separate funds, and the state law is very clear on what those funds can and cannot be used for.
I let you go into last night's meeting if there was another subject or two. I've got a couple of other things, but I thought maybe just to go through last night's meeting, was there anything else that you'd like to share?
Well, I think the things, a couple of things that are, one thing that I think should be of very great interest to our public, especially those that have young children. There's a piece of legislation that is alive in the legislature that would change the start date for children entering school. Right now, if a child is five on or before September 1st, then they can start kindergarten. There is a piece of legislation that would change that to June 1st. And so, so if somebody out there that's got a child that's two or three years old that has been making those plans that they're going to start school, they got a July-August birthday, a June birthday, they're going to start school in two years, and they're not going to have to, and they're making those plans as far as childcare and those kinds of things, to be very aware that that could change. And I know that for some of our families, that's a pretty big change. Obviously, you don't think that's a good idea, you need to call Senator Eddie Fields. This has already made it through the House, and let him know that you think that the date of the start of school should stay where it is, or if you think it ought to change, you can call him, let him know that. I'd also encourage you to call Representative Vaughn. You know, I wish that, you know, there's a lot of education legislation that goes through the House and the Senate, and it's, it's hard for those individuals who represent us to pick up the phone every time and call me or Building Prince or anybody else about every piece of school legislation. This is one of those that I wish I would have gotten a phone call on, because what I would have told either Senator Vaughn or Senator Fields or Representative Vaughn is that, you know, to me, this is one of those deals where somebody's looking for a problem to solve that doesn't exist. The idea behind this is, and there is research that shows that students with summer birthdays, children who are young, who are the youngest ones in their class, that sometimes they don't do as well as students who are older. And that's, you know, many of us have, have, if you've had a child that's got a July or August birthday, have talked to teachers and maybe other educators who have said, well, why don't you wait and hold them out a year? You know, you don't want them to be the youngest one in their class, especially for boys. That seems to be a real issue for boys. Girls, you know, I've never really noticed very many girls who are summer birthdays who are affected by that as much as boys are. But the problem is, when you move that to June 1st, it's going to affect the children who are May and April birthdays, and they're going to become the youngest. And 10 years from now, teachers and administrators are going to advise parents who have children with April and May birthdays, maybe you might want to hold them back and then allow them to start the next year. So whatever date you set that, whatever date you establish for the date of the starting of school, there are always going to be children who push up against that date, and there are always going to be children who are going to be the youngest in their class. And so you're always going to deal with this issue. If you made it December 31st, it'd be November, October birthdays. So, you know, we're going to affect a lot of people's lives, and I just don't think there's a good reason to do that. But, you know, again, it's, it seems to be the eye, the flavor of the month. We fought this last year at the Capitol. It's, you know, as we look for reasons why children aren't successful in school, we look for a lot of things. And right now, some people think we're going to solve a lot of education problems, you know, by pushing the date back. It wasn't because children were born in July and August. It was just the simple fact that they were closer to the start of school. You know, there's a guy named Malcolm Gladwell wrote a book called Outliers, gotten a lot of publicity. And it, and it does a good job of talking about how those artificial dates of when students start school or they start participating in sports, what a difference those dates make in children. And the bottom line is, the older a child is, the better they seem to be. He did a great study on baseball players, you know? There's a significant number of professional baseball players who have July and August birthdays. Well, why is that? It's because that's the cut date for Little League. And so children who are born in July and August are older when they start playing baseball than, than the kids who are in that same age group. And because of older, they're stronger, they're faster, they get better coaching, they get better attention. And so if you go take a major league roster and you open to the dates, the birth dates of the players, you're going to find a lot of July and August birthdays. Does that mean that, that there's something that happens in July and August that makes you a better baseball player? That just means that's a cutoff date for when you start, when you start Little League. If we push the cutoff date for playing baseball to a different time, then it would be those people who were born the next month preceding that. So, you know, it's, again, there are some things that are just anomalies that happen. We can't fix all those. Sometimes we spend a lot of time and disrupt all our lives trying to do it.
If you're, if you're a parent, you don't look at the cost, you don't look at the teams, you look at the cutoff dates. That's the first thing you look at now, whether it be soccer or baseball. You look at how old they have to be, by what date, as the most important determining factor.
Yeah, it is.
So, yeah. One more thing before we let you go. I know that my good friend Jeff Denton got some support last night as our school food services director. Anything you'd like to say? I know that he's done that job for a long time and done it very well here in our school system.
You know, in a democratic society, people have a right to question the decisions that democratic institutions make. You know, at the end of the day, I believe very strongly that our board is always going to make the best decision they can with the information they have at the time. You know, I, I'm not real happy when people come to board meetings and they single out an individual to criticize them, or when people come and single out an individual to praise them. I understand how that happens. I know a lot of people like Jeff, and so these things get personal, and it gets, it takes away from the objectivity we need to have in the process that we have. You know, it, you know, it's very easy to criticize decisions that boards made 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago. I mean, you know, I asked, I had some, look, I've asked, I've asked the questions myself about, when I became superintendent, there were questions I asked about, why do we do something a certain way? And the decision, and the explanation was, well, you know, here's the set of circumstances. This is a decision the board made. I'm going to respect that decision, and I'm going to do the best I can to move on from there. Obviously, the last two years, administrative Obviously, the last two years, administrative costs in this district have been a topic of discussion. Again, the public has a right to ask those questions in a democratic society. And, and maybe, you know, we haven't answered those the best way we could. It's always a tough issue. No one likes their salary to be discussed in public. You know, my guess is that, that it's just something we don't like. I grew up at a time, I remember one of the first things my dad told me is, is, that's not a question you ask somebody, you ask somebody what they make. But, when you work for a school system, you learn very quickly that's public information. You know, I think the question that community kind of needs to ask itself, you know, I think there are, there are two types of people. There are people who are skeptics, and there are people who are cynics. A skeptic is someone who, who asks questions, and when you answer that question, they'll weigh the evidence that you present, and they'll decide whether or not the decision that was made was a rational, logical decision to make based upon the information at the time. A cynic is somebody who, it doesn't matter what evidence you present, they're never going to change their opinion or to change their mind. You know, skeptics force us to be better. They force us to, to weigh carefully every decision we make, they force us to be accountable, and at the end of the day, I think they make us better. Cynics don't contribute to the process. And, and, you know, again, individuals have to decide for themselves whether the individuals that are criticizing our schools are skeptics or whether they're cynics. You know, we can work with skeptics. We have skeptics in our own staff. I mean, we, you know, there's a lot of things that we do here at the central office that we think are good ideas, and sometimes our teacher staff is initially resistant to that. But again, once they see the value of that, more times than not, if it's a good idea, a good program, a good decision, they're going to become supportive of that. You know, the best example I have of that is the position of Shelley, that Shelley Aaron has right now. When we moved Shelley Aaron from Union Elementary to, to Central Office, we got a lot of pushback about, it's just another central office administrator. And why do you need another administrator? Why can't Jean Gattan do that job? Or why can't she do what Shelley, why can't she be in charge of the, of the, of the school improvement responsibilities? Why can't, I think Susan Powell was here at the time and later barbecuing. But what's happened over the last two years, really, last year and a half, is the work that Shelley's done with tightening up the instruction program in this district, so that we're holding everybody accountable, teachers and principals, to the, to the instruction model that we have in place, I think has demonstrated to even the harshest critics that that was a good decision. And our school system is better because of that position. You know, I was, when, I was a skeptic when, 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 when Tom Syte and Jean Gattan came to me and said, "Look, because our district needed improvement, the state's going to require us to create this position." I didn't want to do that. I didn't like the idea of the state of Oklahoma telling me that I had to create a position, which I frankly like a lot. I didn't think we needed that. I thought we were, I didn't think that there was any value to that job. I thought that, that we were doing, we had enough supervision, we were tight enough, that our principals were carrying out exactly what we were asking them to do and what they reported to me they were doing. What we found out, once we put Shelley in place, is that just those additional set of eyes, that, that principals were not following the improvement plan exactly the way we intended it to be followed, or even exactly the way that they reported to us. Now, does that mean they weren't telling us the truth? No. They, you know, they were doing what principals do, operating their schools every day, they got a piece of paper, paper from the central administration, a report to fill out, and, and they reported it to us the way they thought we wanted it reported. And there wasn't a mechanism in place in a school district this size to be able to just check that out without principals and staff showing us what they knew we wanted to see. My guess is, that's probably not different than the other job. My guess is that, that everybody, you know, who watches this, they've had a job somewhere where, where they knew how to put a report together in such a way that the, the guy, their direct supervisor, or their direct supervisor supervisor, would get that report and say, "Okay, you're doing things the way we want it done," when in actuality, they may be doing things a little bit different. And that's just the nature of work in America in a bureaucratic system, which is what we have. So, so people had a right to be skeptical of that job, but I, I don't think you'll find anybody, and I have not, I've not found, I had a lot of questions when we first started that position, but I can tell you, the feedback I've had from principals and teachers throughout the district is, this is one of the best things we've ever done, that it's made us a better school, it's made me a better principal, we're doing a better job of providing instruction for students. A cynic would be somebody who would look at that position, look at the improvements, look at those things and go, "It's not enough. We've had a 15% improvement student achievement, I knew that we wouldn't get where we needed to be." You know, again, I think in all parts of our society, right now, we're in a mode in America right now where we have way too many cynics and not enough skeptics, and it makes us, makes us hard to improve our society and move forward, and have cordial discussions about the, the, the challenges we face in America right today, whether, whether it be, you know, the political challenges we face, or the education challenges that we face.
Dr. Pennington, thanks so much for your time. We'll talk with Dr. Pennington on our May Board of Education wrap-up show next month. Have a pleasant evening.
Mr. Williams is 100% pure energy and excitement for our school. He first walked into our music room in November 2009, and in a very short time produced an awe-inspiring Christmas program. Since then, he continues to wow and amaze us with the wonderful programs in which all students participate. Every student at every grade level is transformed into a performer through musical productions. We call him the Miracle Man at Woodlands. In, I don't have my glasses. In addition, he also organizes Circle the State for 5th graders and an all-school music talent show. His communication with parents and staff is without fault, making sure there are no questions unanswered as, as to those programs and deadlines that approach. He even puts graphics on his notes, and there's a graphic right there. You see, okay. In these tough economical times, Mr. Williams takes advantage of every grant-writing opportunity possible. Because of him, our school has been awarded many instruments and other musical items that enhance the enjoyment of music for our students. Expectations are high for individual talents, and students are stretched to grow in musical knowledge, skills, and abilities. Through all this, Mr. Williams maintains a wonderfully positive attitude which overflows to our entire staff. Mr. Williams, we admire your commitment, and thank you for making music a living, breathing part of the Woodlands world.
We do appreciate it.
Sarah's one of these that you can talk about for a long time, what a blessing she is to me. I'm going to read what I wrote about her. Sarah's a very organized person. She is always prepared for all athletic events and deadlines of the athletic department. She has great working knowledge of the operations of our department, and always acts in a very professional manner, and is mindful of confidential information. Sarah is very easy to work with and has great people skills. She is very dependable, so there is never a worry that our daily operations will be taken care of. Congratulations, Sarah, on a job well done.
I'm going to read what Woodlands says about Mrs. Isley. Mrs. Isley is a familiar face at Woodlands School. You just never know where you might see her, as her volunteer efforts span a wide variety of needs. Mrs. Isley volunteers regularly in our primary classrooms, but willingly assists wherever she's needed. She once used her connections with a local business that was closing to bring hundreds of needed office school supplies to our school. For this, she spent hours and hours being at, behind a dolly, not being a dolly, behind a dolly, loading office supplies to our school, and unloading these supplies for teachers and students to use. When she became aware of a classroom that needed an LED projector, Mrs. Isley found matching funds that could purchase this projector for this classroom. It is pretty much understood around Woodlands that if there is a need, Mrs. Isley can make it happen. She's willing to sacrifice her time and use her many abilities without ever expecting anything in return. Mrs. Isley, we want you to know how very much we do appreciate you and all you do for our school. You are truly a friend of education to Woodlands School.